Good evening. I'd like to call this Select Board Regular Session Meeting to order. It's November 13, 2018, 7:00 PM, and this is the Callahan Room. All those who are able and who wish would you stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brittany, could we have the roll call, please?
Mark Schraub.
Here.
Bob Bishop.
Here.
John Martel.
Here.
Ed Haller.
Here.
John Boyer.
Here.
Okay, we have minutes from October 22 to approve. Could I have a motion?
Absolutely. I make a motion we accept the October 22, 2018 minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any corrections or additions or ... I just have a couple on page three. Third line down where it says March 30 and April 6, it should be "or." And in the OPEB, the next one down in Town Manager Updates, this should be where it says the where Ken had stated who was on the committee, should be Sharon Messenger. And I believe Rick Lombardi's name is with an "I," not a "Y." And it was Sue Vijan. I'm not 100% sure on that spelling.
Oh, yeah.
And that's it? For me, anyways. Anything else? Okay. Approve as corrected.
Motion to approve is corrected.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Okay, this is the part of the meeting that's a public address to the board. This is a time when the public may address the board on any item listed on the meeting agenda or on any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask that you do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company or institution you represent. The public address to the board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Decisions or, excuse me, discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. Questions on procedural matters may be answered by the chair or their designee. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when an agenda item is discussed by the board, please make the request at this time. This request may be granted by the board chair. Address comments to the board chair and be concise. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board at this time? Thank you. So now we come to one of the more happy things on our agenda. It always is, appointing people to boards and to departments. And the first one that we have is to our police department. And it is the ratification and appointment of a permanent intermittent reserve police officer. I've got to read a couple memos to start out with. And the first one is from our town manager, Kenneth Walto, to us. He says, "I hereby recommend for your ratification the appointment of Dylan Benzavenga as a permanent intermittent reserve police officer effective November 13, 2018. Mr. Benzavenga, a graduate of the University of Massachusetts Amherst and Berkshire Community College, has completed the required Massachusetts Basic Reserve Academy and all pre-employment screening. Chief Coe's recommendation and Mr. Benzavenga's letter of interest and resume are enclosed for your further information. Thank you for your consideration of this appointment." And I'd like to also read Chief Coe's memo to Mr. Walto. "Dated November 5, 2018. Greetings, sir. In September, you gave a conditional offer of employment to Dylan Benzavenga for the position of permanent intermittent police officer. After completing the civil service hiring protocol, Dylan was the only person to sign that he would accept the appointment. He has a bachelor's degree in psychology from the University of Massachusetts, and he has already completed the MPTC, Basic Reserve Academy, and other training requirements. Additionally, he has passed his Massachusetts Police Medical Physical Aptitude Test and Psychological Screening. I am asking for the Select Board to approve the appointment of Dylan Benzavenga to your permanent intermittent officer at its November 13 meeting, 2018. Thank you for your consideration. Respectfully, Jeffrey E. Coe, Chief of Police." You know, I read over, I don't know what you want to do. Do you want to ...
However you want. No, I'll save my comment. I'll save comments for later. Why don't you go ahead and ... Well, do you want to vote?
We can vote.
Well, you don't have comments before or anything?
I don't have a motion.
Okay.
Make a motion and open it up.
Okay. Why don't you make a motion and open it up?
I make a motion we appoint Dylan Benzavenga as a permanent intermittent police officer effective November 13, 2018.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motions were made and seconded. We'll open it for discussion. But I would like to defer to you first.
So I'll just make a comment. I was going to save it for, but one of the things I noticed during the process is our process takes a long time, no matter how much we try to get it organized with civil service and appointment dates. Dylan, your patience and understanding to kind of roll with the punches is what stuck out to me. It's kind of your personality that showed through during the interview, and that's the type of person we need. So we're very fortunate to have someone with your capability to just stay in the moment and not get emotional or overreact. You didn't show any signs of frustration, and I know there was some in there, particularly with some screening processes. So that's why, you know, you're going to be an effective police officer, so remember that. If you carry that throughout your career, you're not going to have any problems.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
I'm going to beat these guys to the punch because I know we already talked about it. Dylan, the letter of interest is unbelievable. Like, you know, you look at people's resumes and they're all about the same, but the letter of interest was just spot on, was spot on. And then the other thing is today I spoke to Mike Madalena, Lieutenant Madalena, who I've worked with for the last 24 years, and he gave you high marks.
That's great.
So if he's saying that about you, I trust that man. You got my vote.
Anybody else?
Do you know all these people?
All right, wow. Okay.
Just don't ask to introduce them, all right?
Thank you.
You come with a very impressive resume and a letter of interest, so I welcome you.
Gentlemen, anything?
No. I can only echo my colleagues' sentiments because of the strong recommendation, mostly from the chief and from Mark Schraub, a fellow police officer in Pittsfield. And this outstanding turnout here only expands our view. Very rarely do we get a turnout of this magnitude, and it means that the community supports this appointment. And we're so glad to see that, excuse me, that you more or less signify particular interest in us appointing this young man to the Dalton Police Department, and we're thrilled to have him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doesn't leave me much more to say. But I too was impressed by your letter of interest. Your resume shows that you're a hard worker and you're dedicated to whatever you do, which is a big thing for this job. It's an honorable profession, and I think that you'll embrace it and you'll do well. I can't see you doing anything else but, so you have my vote, too.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments? Okay.
Would you take a vote?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Welcome aboard.
So your badge 13?
Oh.
I know everyone thinks you have bad luck, but I started at badge 13, and I became chief. So we actually have someone who's leaving us for Stockford, so you'll very quickly be badge 12, so don't worry.
Well, first of all, I want to thank the town Dalton, the town manager, and the Select Board for appointing me to this position. It's an honor. I want to take a minute to acknowledge a few people. Lieutenant Madalena, Officer Carlo, Chief Coe, Nick Sparandow, and of course, my mother, Robin McPherson. It's an honor to have these people by my side and support me through everything that I've been through lately. I'm looking forward to working in Dalton. It's my hometown. I really just, I love you all. You know, every single one of you have been in the hallway, and I'm just glad to have you all here as part of this appointment, and thank you very, very much.
You all set? All right. I'll hold you downstairs. Sure.
Congratulations.
Hey. Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Hey. It's 13 some of the ...
I'm the 13.
Hi, John. How are you? Alicia, Frankie's wife. She's been here. Over there.
There you go.
Yeah, Jeremy.
Thank you. Thank you. You, too.
This is my first project.
Yes. This is Ben McGold.
That's great.
We came back down to Dalton. Yeah, I know. We go back. This is it. This is it.
Hey. I'm thrilled to have the board here. How you doing? Good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I feel bad. We just wanted you to know.
Oh, that's, yeah. That's right.
I grew up with Chris.
Absolutely. Awesome.
Wow.
That's amazing. I'm quite impressed.
Okay. We'll continue on. We have another appointment to the Beautification Commission. And in this memorandum from Mr. Walto, it says, "I recommend for your ratification the appointment of Robert R. Mary of 33 Ensign Street to the Dalton Beautification Commission for an initial term to expire on June 30, 2021. Mr. Mary has been an active, has been active as a volunteer assisting the commission for several years. He also serves as an alternate board member on the Council on Aging. The recommendation of Beautification Commission Chair Anne Marie Chiketti is enclosed for your information. Thank you for your consideration of this appointment." And I'll quickly read Mrs. Chiketti's recommendation. "I am pleased to nominate Bob Mary for the current vacancy on the Dalton Beautification Commission. Bob has been an active DVC volunteer for several years and has graciously offered to become a commission member as well as co-chairperson effective January 1, 2019. Bob's energy, cooperative spirit, dedication to community, mechanical and technical skills will be a wonderful addition to the commission. DVC has a great group of volunteers, and Bob will make another superb member. Thank you for your consideration and endorsement of Robert Mary as DVC Commissioner, co-chairperson. Signed, Anne Marie Chiketti, DVC Chairperson." May I have a motion?
You may. I make a motion we appoint Robert Mary of 33 Ensign Street to the Dalton Beautification Commission for an initial term to expire on June 30, 2021.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. I know, I'm just going to break this up just for a second here. And I think you were out in the hallway, so you may not have even heard this. We allow, we allow the public to address the board before the meeting, and I just want to give you a chance if you want to address the board now, but if you're here for a particular item, you can address us at that time.
They're here for Agenda Item Number Nine, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. Unless you want to say something now, that's fine. Okay.
Is, may I interrupt?
Yes.
Is there one of these packets labeled "press" on it?
It's right over there.
Ah, there it is. Okay.
Okay. We're all set? Okay. Our third appointment is to the Cultural, is to the Cultural Council. And again, in a memo to us from Ken, says, "I hereby recommend for your ratification the appointment of Mary Farrell of 496 East Street, Pittsfield, to the Dalton Cultural Council for a term to expire June 30, 2021. Ms. Farrell, a longtime former resident, has been an active volunteer with the Dalton Cheerleaders, Dalton American Legion Auxiliary, and at Wacona Regional High School. The recommendation of Donald Harris, Cultural Council co-chair, is enclosed for your information. Thank you for your consideration of this appointment." And I'll read Mr. Harris's, excuse me, recommendation. Says, "I hereby," I, no, not hereby, "I recommend the immediate appointment of Mary Farrell, 496 East Street, Pittsfield, Mass. 01201. She has lived in Dalton for most of her life, but moved to Pittsfield about five years ago. She was a group leader for the Dalton Cheerleaders for 14 years and a member of the Dalton American Legion Auxiliary for four. She also manages Lindsay's Award every year at Wacona and uses the funds to help local families. She will make a fine member. Sincerely, Donald Harris." May I have a motion?
You may. I make a motion we appoint Mary Farrell of 496 East Street, Pittsfield, to the Dalton Cultural Council for a term to expire on June 30, 2021.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Excuse me. We have an acceptance of a grant. And this is a grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts State 911 Department, FY 2019 PSAP, Regional Emergency Communications Center Support and Incentive Grant. I'm going to have Ken explain this, but we can have a motion first.
Okay. I make a motion that the town of Dalton accepts the grant of $17,534 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts State 911 Department, FY 2019 PSAP, and Regional Emergency Communications Center.
Okay, this ... I need a second.
Oh, second, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Go ahead. Okay. As you may know, we did an annual grant to support the communications center, and it's been in the neighborhood of $127,000 since these grants commenced. This money's derived from the fees that are paid on cell phones. We got a supplemental grant this year. This is the first increase in this grant since its inception because we are now going to take cellphone 911 calls. All cellphone 911 calls went directly to the state police department, and they're going to be directed to us, and in virtue of the additional workload the state has granted some additional funds.
That's a big change. That's a good change.
Good change.
It's a very good change. Okay. Any discussion or questions?
Great.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's great. It cuts out the middleman. It sends it, calls directly to our dispatch center and serves the community much, much better.
So any cellphone from any area code that's called in Dalton would go here, is that correct?
Yes, I understand.
Okay. Thank you.
Even if it had a strange area code?
You know, I'm not sure about that.
Well, you know, they must be able to figure out the GPS of the phone when they make the call, so they say, "All right, you're within the town boundaries of Dalton."
Right. You might get the pit sealed if you're on Hubbard Ave or something like that, but ...
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
I was just thinking of visitors or something, you know, that needed help.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Point of order, Ken, we should open as a licensing board on this next one.
Yeah, that's a good point. Put the agenda together.
Okay, so we should ...
There's a licensing.
Okay. Well, I'm going to, at 7:19, I'm going to open up as a licensing board. And before us is a petition to prorate an alcohol license fee for Greeners variety. And in a letter that everyone has in their packet from Mr. Patel, who is the new owner as of our, well, will be as of, no, as of October 31st, is the new owner because they closed on the sale, requests a prorating of the fee for the alcohol license this year and would like to pay for the last two months that they will be using the license instead of, and correct me, Ken, they can be charged for the full year even though it's two months?
They have been charged for the full year. That's, that's been policy.
Okay.
Automatically prorate them.
So he is asking for a prorating of the license. And from what I understand, it has been done in the past?
Yes.
It has been done. We have done that. So I'll open it up to discussion if anyone has any questions.
What's the, what's the fee for the ...
I don't know.
I think it's 600 bucks.
We're talking about $100?
Yeah.
Or prorate it so he's got 500 back, and he would just pay 100.
Yeah. I, it seems to be fair to me.
Let me just ask real quick. The, the other 500 or 600 was paid by Greeners before that.
Yes. You're almost like double, double charging because they had to pay it for, they paid it for a year.
All right.
I have no problem with that.
It's fine. Okay. Do you have any comments, Joe? Okay. Can we have a motion, please?
Sure. I make a motion we accept the proration, prorated fee for two months for Mr. Patel.
I'll second that.
And that's for?
For his license.
OHM variety?
Oh, yeah.
Because it's not Greeners variety. The actual name is OHI variety.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
LLC. Okay, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Now we have item number nine, who our guests are here for. And this is a, an update on the net metering contract. We have a Rockwood AG grid project. And, well, I'll open it up to Ken and our guests.
You would ask for an update on the project, and I've gotten touch with Rashid Aki here, and she's kindly come from Pioneer Valley to talk to you directly about where the project stands.
Yeah, and I wanted to introduce Richard Bujer. Also, Richard is the farmer.
Oh.
Who's Jerry. We are building the Emerald Digestor. So I want to make sure that you see the farmer's face in front of you so you at least can relate to it, hopefully.
Thank you.
And so, if it was kind enough to drive with me at the end of this, so. So we'll just say a few things, and then if you have questions, you know, feel free to ask us. We started this project in 2016.
Mm-hmm.
It's taken us a long time to, you know, these projects are capital intensive, maybe not, you know, as capital, it is still enough to, fact that it takes time. So 2016 was when we basically signed an agreement that we would do this. We've been sort of plugging along since then. 2017 is when we actually started to build the system because we had to wait for the air permits before the air permit you can't build. Took us a good eight months to get the air permit. I think it was like, um, July.
What permit is that again?
Air, air permit.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what happens in this, so, okay, so let me just step back and just kind of draw a, like, a picture, a visual for you.
Yeah.
So cows poop 24/7. We take that manure.
Yeah.
And we put it in this big pit, incorporated as like a huge pit. It's a fermenter. And the manure ferments in it typically over a period of 20-plus days. And while it's fermenting, it's taking the carbon from the manure, or the organics from the manure, and converting it into biogas. Biogas is 60% methane and 40% carbon dioxide, high level. And, you know, 95% methane is natural gas, so, you know, it's basically methane that then we put into an engine that then converts it into electricity. So that's just a nutshell. We also add food waste in our digester. Richard, do you want to add to that?
Well, I can say that the thing has been making gas. The digester itself is 92 feet in diameter, 18 feet deep, and it has a plastic, very, very thick plastic cover over it that rises with the gas pressure.
With the gas, yeah.
The jet set is sitting there. Electricians are now hooking things up, and we're going to have to wait for EverSource to get the interconnection in. Hopefully, that'll happen within the next three months, three to four months.
May I ask more? Yes, you may. So you're actually, of course, obviously producing methane now. Are you actually burning that methane now?
What we have is a flare there, and it's just flare, and it'll ...
So you're not producing any electricity with it?
Not yet.
Not at the moment, no.
We can't produce electricity until EverSource connects us to the grid, and we paid EverSource a lot of money.
Right. I realize they are slow at times. I do realize that.
And so we were in the queue, and we are not scheduled to get the interconnection for the first quarter.
The first quarter.
First quarter of next year.
Okay. Just some environmental thoughts. Even if you didn't do any, the methane would be released, I mean, eventually, from, from the cow waste. It would, it would still, so you're not actually producing more than you would otherwise. You might actually have a use for it, that would say.
When we spread manure on the land.
Yes.
That odor is the methane.
Right.
It's amazing.
Right.
The liquid that comes out of the digester does not smell anywhere near like the common odor was when we were spreading it before. It's really, it has amazed me.
Hmm. The concept sounds very good. I think my personal thing is it took longer than we expected.
Yeah.
To actually produce electricity.
It took longer than we had expected.
Yeah, it's, we, we went through quite a few hurdles, you know, in the overall process. This is the first project for agri-energy, and we learned a lot about, like, various things that we had to go through. So as of now, there is nothing else in the way to stop us from the project, you know, project's pretty much completed. I have some pictures I can show you, except for the interconnection. So that's like the last step.
It's really, EverSource is the, right now, is what's holding it up?
Yeah, absolutely.
The only thing?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I mean, there is a little bit of work that our EPC provider has to do, but that is just so little that it's not the rate-limiting step. We have a temporary flare. They have to put a permanent flare. We have a screen that we have to put in front of a food-based digester because, you know, sometimes we get trash, and that we want to be able to remove that, so we put the screen in front. And we have to hook up our H2S scrubber, so the smell that you have, that egg odor that you get is actually H2S. It's hydrogen sulfide.
Yes.
So we have the scrubber that we have to hook up. So those are sort of like the high-level three, three or four things that our EPC provider has to do, but they are expected to do that over the next four to six weeks. After that, it's pretty much, this project is 450-kilowatt project. In other words, we produce per hour 450 kilowatts. It's not super large project. It's not too, super small either. And EverSource, as you know, EverSource has to do infrastructure improvements on the grid. And one of the big infrastructure improvements that they're trying to do is put a digital transfer trip. What that does is like wherever they're sitting on their computer, they can shut us down if something were to go wrong. In the olden days, they would do a radio signal. In the olden days, they would do a radio signal, but then now they talk about digital transfer trips. Smaller projects, they still do, like, our second project, which is in Hatfield, they're using a radio. And that's gonna actually get done this year. That interconnection's gonna get done this year. So what we did was, we actually put Dalton on our Beldon project, which is the second project, in case it were to produce electricity before Rockwood. Just because we knew you were, you know, you were interested in getting the discounts faster, so.
Right, we are very interested in that.
Yeah, so we were trying to kind of work with that, but it looks to me like, at this moment, January thirty-first is like, you know, when you put the new schedule, so twice a year, Eversource allows you to change what they call Schedule Z, like, how much allocation you have to which municipality. We have signed total of like nine municipalities, and that's the number that we're sitting so far, because that's the amount of electricity across the two projects we have. So we were trying to kind of allocate the electricity to you earlier, but by now, I think we believe that Rockwood still will be your preferred supplier, because by the time Beldon's hooked up, even if the interconnection's done, it takes time to start up a digester. Digester is kind of like a big stomach, so you have to groom the bugs, and it takes time. It's not like a chemical reaction that you can just turn on and off, you know? So by the time, I think that our digester at Hatfield site would get heated, and by the time it would produce gas, by the time we then generate, we, I think, we believe Rockwood will be further along. So we are gonna switch you back, January thirty-first, Schedule Z, that we have to submit to Eversource, we're gonna switch you back to Rockwood again. But we tried, we were trying to see if Beldon was to start in October, we could give you three, three and a half months worth of electricity discount, but, yeah, that's not gonna happen at this moment, so.
Okay. Yeah, a couple of questions. Yeah. One, where is your exact location?
Granville, Mass.
Does it have a road?
Yeah, Granby Road.
Granby Road? Do you accept visitors?
Yes.
Okay.
Three fifty-five Granby Road, Granville, Mass.
What, two fifty-five?
Three fifty-five, yes.
Okay. My second observation is, that you said you were going to have Eversource install the interconnection in the first quarter.
Yes.
Which could be all the way up to March thirty-first.
It could be.
Okay, or further. And we were under the expectations that this project would be up and running and operational in October.
Yes.
So we, we've gone through six months of our contract already. I think we signed up our ten-year contract, Ken. Does the contract have provisions for this? I mean, it doesn't kick in until we're operational?
Yes, it doesn't kick in until we're operational.
Ten years starts when the project is operational and we begin? Okay, that's an important point. And, if there's anything else to do, Mr. Bujer? I'll take a ride down there and check this out, I'd like to.
Glad to have you stop down.
Yeah, thank you. What's the easiest way to get down there?
What's that?
What's the easiest, quickest way to get down there?
Probably Route.
From here?
Route eight.
Route eight?
Yeah, Route eight, and then fifty-seven, and one eighty-five.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, okay.
You could go down into Pittsfield, and then up that way too, but...
Okay. Questions? Comments?
The reason we asked you, because we, like John said, we were expecting October first, and now we're looking at at least six months delay, and we went all in on you, hoping, and we walked away from someone else, so, it was kind of like...
I understand, I think we were looking for a solar project. You know, I wish we had some control over this, we've been producing gas, we've been feeding our digesters since April, and producing gas and flaring. We would like to use electricity and not have, buy electricity, we would very much like to.
You know, originally, Eversource gave you an earlier date for interconnection? Or has always been the case that it's gonna be in the third quarter of, or the first quarter of two thousand and nineteen?
No, we had no idea about that, we, we paid them fully in June.
In June.
That's when they told us that this year's queue is probably tight, and they won't be able to fit us in. So that's when they told us it would be first quarter. So we did not know.
So why did you tell us that in June, when we were delivering this?
When did we decide this?
I don't know.
I think you signed this earlier than us.
Yeah, I have, I think so.
Yeah, you signed this...
I think it was March.
Yeah.
I thought it was March.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, we, we, if we had known, we've been keeping you posted, and like, every time, I can ask for an update, I, we are happy to provide the update. These projects don't go like Rockwood, they just don't.
We understand that any endeavor of this nature, that there's startup glitches and things you didn't, don't have control over, i.e. the Eversource, but we're just anxious because we spent so much time on this. We did.
Yeah, I mean, this...
Delivery for almost a full year.
You don't want to be anxious about it.
Yeah.
And this problem would have, it would be with solar projects too. They are not immune to this issue, you know, we're all sort of in the same boat.
One really stupid question, you have these cows that are producing this, raw material, so to speak, for this methane gas and eventually electrical power. These cows aren't doing this, are they all being just regular cows, like munching grass and making milk, or beef steaks, or whatever?
They're making milk.
Okay.
And we ship about fifty thousand pounds of milk every other day.
Wow. How many cows you have?
Just about four hundred.
Wow.
Holsteins?
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 What, what's going, Holsteins?
Holsteins, yeah.
Yeah.
I think the important part for me is, it doesn't start until we're up and running anyway.
What's that?
I said, the important part for me is, we don't start until, or we don't start a tenure contract until we're up and running.
Yes.
And the other thing is, I appreciate you coming out too, so, driving out there, I appreciate, I think that shows how important it is to you, to you guys, so I appreciate that.
We are very much partners in this, this is not like, hey, it's a, we, we share the project finances, as well as revenues, and everything, so we are just partners.
How long have you been a farmer for?
Fifty years.
Can you imagine twenty years ago, sitting here with this whole project out there? It's crazy.
No, but I'd like to go back twenty years.
So you'll keep Ken posted on, on the timetable, any kind of change?
Sure.
You know, good news, like it's gonna be much sooner?
That would, we would love to. Actually, I was hoping, you know, they would do it in January, like, I want to know, so, but it is, it's very difficult, I keep asking, is there any update? It's very difficult to get.
It's probably very good that you keep asking, so they remember you.
Yeah.
Does your company, Aggrid, have any other projects, anywhere, in that is comparable to this, that are up and running?
Yes, so we, this was our first project, and Hatfields is our second project, Beldon, that's also another farm for Beldon, and so that's actually getting interconnected in three, three weeks. It's interconnected sooner, it's a smaller project, it's three hundred KW, but we haven't started the digester heating, we haven't started feeding, we haven't done any of that. So it's gonna take time, three, four months, to kind of get to that level of gas, to then start, be able to start the engine. So this would still potentially be our first project that'll get interconnected and produce electricity.
Okay. Everyone set? You good?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming out, it's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't believe I closed as the licensing board. Okay. Well, I just want to make a point, I didn't close as the licensing board after our item number eight, and it should have been at seven twenty-four. So we'll continue on, we are closed as the licensing board. The next item is the Green Dalton Committee report, and I'm not sure if we're gonna have that report.
Well, I am gonna give you a...
I, I see this is what you gave us, yep.
Everybody should have in their packet, this is a grant application, I'll explain what the grant application is, I wanted to keep you abreast of the activities of the Green Dalton Committee in regards to this particular project. You'll remember that some time ago, you assigned the duties of the former Waste Management Study Committee, the Green Dalton Committee. And Waste Management Study Committee was set up to assist the Board of Health when the select word was acting as the Board of Health, to manage the solid wastes of Dalton. You're involved in the transfer station, and you're involved particularly in the pay-as-you-throw operation that we have there. Around that time, the Board of Health changed its regulations to require haulers, and I was involved in that, I think it goes back ten years, maybe even more. The Board of Health changed its regulations also to require the private haulers to separate their trash, just like we do if you use a transfer station. There's an incentive for using the, for separating your trash, because you get to dispose of your recyclables free, while you have to pay for the bags, so that's pay-as-you-throw. At the, around the same time, the Board of Health instituted regulations to require the private haulers in town to separate the wastes, and a bylaw was adopted, which had the very same kind of language, it was not as, as detailed as what exists in the Board of Health regulations, it merely said that recycling is required in Dalton of the people who use private haulers. But that has never worked in actuality. So the Green Dalton Committee, particularly as a subcommittee of Shaw Rose and Jenny Gitlitz, have been investigating how to go about doing this. And years ago, when the pay-as-you-throw system was set up, the town got a grant, technical assistance, personnel hours, from the DEP to establish that system. So what they decided to do was to apply for grant to do the very same thing. So what you're seeing here is just a simple online grant application.
Thank you.
Now, prior to doing this, the Jenny and Cheryl went to the Board of Health, to make sure that the Board of Health was agreeable to going forward with this type of a project, to figure out a way to have the private haulers do what's already required in the town. So that's what this grant application is all about. We are asking the Department of Environmental Protection to give us a grant of, a technical assistance grant, that would be manpower, to look at best practices in the industry, so that we can actually get our haulers in town to do what they're supposed to be doing under the Board of Health regulations and our bylaw. That's, that's...
So they've been, they have not been contacted yet about?
The hauls.
The haulers?
No, not that far along yet.
Okay.
So if we get the grant of technical assistance, the staff person at DEP is going to work with us to look at the best practices, and then we'll, we'll get, you know, kind of get there, if there's a regulation to be adopted, and then the Board of Health will actually, before they can implement a new regulation, they have to hold a public hearing. It may require us to amend the bylaw that we have, I don't know that yet, but when draft regulations are promulgated, we'll go to town council, as we normally do with any bylaw or regulation, and let them weigh in on it. So we're at the very beginning stages of this, but I thought it wasn't too early to brief you on what was, what was happening.
Ken, does the Board of Health, I don't think the Select Board does, license private haulers?
Yes, they do.
On an annual basis?
On an annual basis.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ken? Okay, thank you. Next, we have a couple petitions for extension of deadlines for removal of junk and unregistered vehicles. The first one is at two ninety Hubbard Avenue, which is Vosburgh Automotive, and they are an extension, and I'll read quickly the, the request that was sent. And the request came through Karen Vosburgh, who was the wife of Gary Vosburgh, who was a co-owner of Vosburgh Automotive. It says, "I'm sending this email for my husband, Gary Vosburgh of Vosburgh Automotive, in regards to the notice two zero eight seven from October eleventh, two thousand and eighteen. We have removed some of the cars mentioned in this notice, and are requesting a thirty-day extension on the remaining cars. We are waiting for customers to bring us the titles of those cars. If you need any more information, or would like to speak to me, please feel free to call me at, and the number was given. Thank you. Gary Vosburgh of Vosburgh Automotive." So they're asking for a thirty-day extension on their removal of these vehicles.
How many cars are left, John, do you know?
It's not many, it's, it's one or two. Gary spoke to me personally about it. I talked to Chief Coe, and he is in favor of giving this extension. He, he's in favor, Chief Coe, in, in general, is in favor of giving extensions, as long as people show us that they're working towards the initial end, that's all they're really happy, that's all he's happy about. And if it takes a little bit more time, great, give him a little bit more time. So that's his philosophy on, on the extensions, so I'll leave it at that.
I think it's a good philosophy, I mean, it's a positive thought.
I have no problem with that.
Just one minor question, on top of the communicate, Karen, at Kelly's Packard Store.
Mm-hmm.
Why's that?
She works there, and they have...
So she said this while she was working?
Yes, and I believe it's because, and I believe...
Just asking then.
I believe it was because of a time, a time limit.
Oh, okay. I know the Vosburgh, you live right across the street from me.
I know, it was a joke.
Not anymore.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, do I have a motion?
Sure. I make a motion, we grant a thirty-day extension to Gary Vosburgh of Vosburgh Automotive.
I'll second that.
Motion remains seconded. Is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. The next one is from eleven ninety North Street, the Barden, Barden family, Peter Barden. And I'll read, actually, I read a couple of memos, or, actually, it's in addition to the initial request for an extension. "Since the arrival of the letter stating the removal of certain items from eleven ninety North Street, we have removed the Nissan car. Because of the size and weight of the tractor, man lift, truck, backhoe, we have made arrangements of their removal with a contractor capable of moving such sizes and weights. But the removal of those will need to be done on, on the contractor's schedule. The removal of the truck was to be last week, and we are still waiting. Just prior to the letter, we had two trucks, a tractor, and a car removed. Because of having only four days off a month, working out, working out of state, and with an onset of winter, we would appreciate your consideration of an extension due to hardship." And as a follow-up to that, this week, the man lift has been removed, along with the tractor loader backhoe. We thought Village Trucking had the capability to remove the truck with the boom, and we thought that would be gone by now. Peter has contacted us, told us, he has not forgotten us, so we are still waiting for the removal. He has, if he isn't capable of removing the truck, we're gonna redefine someone who can. As previously stated, Peter is home one day a week, winter's coming on, and the need for wood, we are asking for the consideration of extensions to give us time for the wood, to get the wood and find storage areas so we can remove the container. So...
How long of a...
They didn't say.
Ken, how many vehicles are there? Is it saying there? I didn't see it. Ten or eleven?
Well, I can, I can listen, are two flatbed trucks, a gray Nissan Maxima sedan, and as stated in those other memos, they've been, some of those, these have been removed. Farm equipment in general, a yellow backhoe, two blue tractors, a forklift, a bucket truck, a bucket lift, and two pieces of farm equipment. So it's quite a bit of stuff there, yeah.
I have the feeling that it's gonna need at least through the winter, because the bad weather's gonna set in pretty soon.
We're allowed, I don't have the bylaw right in front of me.
We're limited to the extension we give?
Yeah, we're limited to the extension we can give. But I, Ken, have you got it, have you got that in front of you, what's the number of days? It's like, isn't it ninety days per, is it per, per piece of, per vehicle? It's like, isn't it 90 days per, is it per, per piece of, per vehicle? Or is it 90 days with the violation?
I think it's 90 days. If you want to wait, I'll go and grab the ordinance and see if I can find it.
Well, I would, I mean, I would just, I think they're going to need time here because of, these aren't just plain junk cars, they're trucks, destruction equipment, other things. And I would be in favor of the 90-day extension.
I'm, I'm pretty sure it's a maximum of 90 days, which I wouldn't have a problem with myself.
Yep.
That'll give them until, into January, February.
It's automatically 30 from the day of the notification. So, then it's at the end of the first 30 days then the.
Yes, okay.
New extension runs. So, it's October 10th, November 10th.
Well, then I'll, I'll take a motion of that.
Hey, you wish. Sure. I make a motion.
I'm sorry, can I just check on one thing here? We're talking about getting, we're coming into winter.
Yep.
And we want to get, give them time to get it out. I mean, we don't want them doing it in the middle of winter. I mean, we wanted to do it, get it done, but we're understanding what would happen if we tabled this right now and put a date to take it back up at, say, February, our first February meeting.
Well, that essentially, we're giving them an extension.
I understand.
We have to give them something. If you have it handy, Ken, why don't, why don't we just?
I don't have it handy, but if you want to. We should do the extension, there's something for the chief to go by.
Yeah, because.
Do the extension once it's over?
Yeah.
Can we give him another 90 days after the first 90 days? I have to check, I just don't remember, I don't remember the bylaw.
That's what I'm concerned about. That's why I was saying, if we, maybe the one avenue we could go, we tabled this and took it back up.
Yeah, but if we tabled, it'd be a violation. The first 30 days are up.
I don't think we can table it. We have to, we have to make a decision.
We have to give them an extension if we don't want them to be in violation right now. He's going to run into this violation.
Because I thought we gave somebody 90 days earlier or something more than 30 the last time through.
I'm assuming we haven't heard a word from our local businessman on Hooton County Street.
No, not that I know of.
I didn't expect it.
I didn't, not that I know of.
We have one local businessman who's.
Yeah, well, you're right, Ed.
Okay.
I'm more concerned, yeah, good point.
Okay, if we're allowed to give, just so we can get ahead of the, ahead of this, if we're allowed to give more than the 90 days, do you want to extend it until April?
April, first of April, I think that's fair. I think that's more than fair.
Yeah, I would even want to go to the end of April. Don't forget you come into the mud season. That prohibits this kind of activity.
Well, yeah, but this, this piece of, this piece of property though, it's bordered by two roads and, you know, it's not that hard to access. But just something to consider because if we're able to give more than the 90 days, we may want to do that.
But he's got the right man for the job though. He's got the pan, he's got the equipment to dig that stuff out of there.
Yeah.
If it's possible, I'd be more inclined to give him the 90 days and then if he can't do it, if he comes back to us, give him another second one. But rather than have him thinking about starting it on April 1st, more.
Next time we do this, I'll remember to print out the bylaw.
Uh-oh.
Okay. Maximum time period says, "Select Board may approve an application for a maximum of two such vehicles for a period not to exceed a total of 180 days. That is 90 days each if two vehicles. However, upon reapplication, the Dalton Select Board may grant an extension not to exceed a total of 180 additional days."
After the 180 days?
Yeah.
Well, 180 days, that's, that's six months. That's, I think that's probably more than enough.
That's the end of May, yeah.
If.
July.
They can, they can, they can apply for another, for another extension after the initial extension?
I think you have to do it 90 days and then do it 90 days again. Boy, I, I heard him read it.
Says with two cars, 180 days, 90 and 90, 90 per car.
Yeah.
90 per car. He's got like four years.
Yeah, that's a problem.
No, he doesn't.
Yeah, 90 days each of two vehicles. So, it's 90 days for one vehicle.
Well, seeing that he has more than one vehicle there.
He has two vehicles, well, he's more than two.
Yeah. So, that we can, I guess what the question was is can we grant 180 days?
I think you can. I'll read it again. "Select Board may approve the application submitted for a maximum of two such vehicles for a period not to exceed a total of 180 days. That is 90 days each if two vehicles. Then upon reapplication, the Select Board may grant an extension not to exceed a total of 180 additional days." So, it's 90 days each for each vehicle.
Okay.
I think to be safe, we should just do 90 days and then if you can't do it, I think we can still do another 90 days.
Yep, I agree with that.
That's fine with me. I don't want to, I don't want to give them carte blanche on this. I'd like to see the, the activity follow through. And actually, sometimes in the winter, if the ground is frozen.
That's true.
It may be easier to get these pieces of equipment out of there. So, yeah, I would, I would say 90 days would, would be our max on this for the time being and he can come back and reapply after the 90 days for any further extensions giving us proper reason to give that additional extension. I don't know, Marky?
I agree with that. We're good.
Okay.
Yeah, we got the option of coming back. Okay, I make a motion, we have a grant, the 90-day extension to the Barden's at 1190 North Street.
I'll second that.
Motion remains second. Is there further discussion?
Ken, correct me if I'm wrong, did you say whatever extension we grant is retroactive to the day he was issued the citation?
They automatically get 30 days from the day of the citation.
That was October 10th.
Yes.
So, he's up to November 11th.
Right.
So, now he's got 90 days from November 11th, which is just the other day.
Right.
Fine.
Okay. Anything else? Ken, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The next petition is from Mr. Barden again, and this is in regard to using the road in the now-town property across from 1190, yes, across from 1190 North Street to access his wood lot on North Mountain Road, on North Mountain. And I'll, I'll read the request. "Since we only heat with wood from our wood lot on North Mountain," and that's two houses, they say, "I'm requesting permission to use right-of-way on that property to the lot. I use, I use this right-of-way only for the purpose, purpose of harvesting wood for personal use. As of right now, with my present work schedule, I, I only have one day a week off. I will be the only person using this right-of-way through the year. By using this right-of-way, I will not hold the town of Dalton responsible for any liability of personal injury or personal property damage. Once every 10 years, our forester consultant goes on the lot to write a forestry plan to submit to the state. At this time, the state forester may inspect the property before submission. This is the only time that anyone beside myself will be using this entrance."
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
This right-of-way, I mean, he owned all the land. Why would it have a right-of-way on his own land?
He gave a right-of-way to.
The tower.
The, the radio tower, whoever, Time Warner Cable or Dalton Cable or Pittsfield Dalton Cable at the time, had a radio tower up there that they used for their transmissions and needed access to get to it. So, this particular road was used by them to get to the tower. So, he gave a right-of-way to the company. He didn't give a right-of-way to himself because he owned the property.
Right.
But now he's requesting.
To use.
A right-of-way, a grant, for us to grant him the use of that road as a right-of-way to his property on North Mountain.
But he does not currently have a right-of-way from us.
No, he doesn't.
So, that's something new he's actually asking.
He's asking.
Right, okay.
He's asking for, yes, for that right-of-way.
I have no, can I speak to that? I have no problem with that. I mean, he's got to get his firewood, I mean, and that's the only way you can get to his land. There's no other way of getting that.
Yes, I agree. The only, the only issue, the main issue here, I think, is the liability because we kept that, we decided to continue posting that property for, from people so that no one got hurt or we.
We didn't know what was on the property, what the status was.
So, we made that decision last meeting, I believe. We can, in, in talking this over, we can, we can grant a right-of-way to Mr. Barden, but he, as he, as he stated here, has to take responsibility for and liability for any personal injury, any property damage, personal property damage, and also tell us who's going to be using that, that right-of-way. And he says that he's going to be using it exclusively, nobody else. But I don't know who would write that up. Would it be our attorney, his attorney? Or what would we do to get that signed, sealed and delivered?
Well, for efficiency's sake, we probably want to talk to our town council and just get some kind of, probably a whole harmless agreement or some indemnification agreement, whatever council advises us to sort of be written the way we want it. Because otherwise, we'd have to require his attorney to give us something, our attorney would have to look at it.
And we don't want to run into a lot of bills, right?
Yeah, it gets, it gets a little bit.
There'll be a lot of legal issues involved here. And it says you're granting him a right-of-way over our property.
Yes.
Could have legal implications down the road depending how we dispose of that property.
Yeah.
If we end up not developing it and just selling it at auction because it's in tax title, that could be a real issue because you granted him a right-of-way. I would suggest you hold off on granting any right-of-ways to him, we consult with our attorneys, and two, we find out what's going to happen on that property in the immediate future. Is there going to be any kind of mitigation work or related things that would preclude him from being on the property or anybody else as we've already done?
That's a good point. I wonder when we do the town updates, Ken, if you could let us know what the status is with the garage cleanup?
Yes.
Good, okay. Now, but also the road may want to go away. If you're going to use it for a field at some point, we may not want to have a road right there.
Exactly. And also, I don't think there's any immediacy to this issue because he's not going to be cutting any wood and chopping any wood this time of year.
Well, that's what he says he's going to do.
Well, he's already, if he burns wood, he's already done it. If he's going to be doing it after, in the spring, it's going to be for next year. I mean, that's how these things work.
Well, I, I realize that. You don't want to, you don't want to burn green wood and you want it to season. But you, they have these, those external wood burning heaters.
Yep.
That'll burn anything.
Right.
Including green wood.
Yep.
So, it, they're, they're, to me, it sounds like there's an immediacy here.
There is.
For him to continue cutting wood and harvesting the wood so he can heat the two houses.
Can we do a, can we do a right-of-way with an expiration date of that case?
That, that's very, I mean, I think that's exactly what you want to do. You don't want to make anything permanent.
Right.
You want to probably touch base with our lawyer, but we want to have it very limited.
Yeah, and it's not so much a right-of-way, it's authorization.
Yes, exactly, right.
We don't want anything in the deed.
Yes.
Well, if we could authorize Ken to contact town council with these.
Concerns.
Concerns, stipulations, I think it's a good idea to have an expiration date on it and, you know, form it in that respect. And it probably will work out. But I think he needs to do it as soon as he can.
I like Ken's, I think the authorization.
That isn't clear here yet. It didn't really say that. And two, I, I understand there's also access to that property by going up to Duncan Brook property.
He's got to get to the, he's got to get to that road. To get to that road, he's got to cut across and make a new road to get to it from Duncan Brook, the Duncan Brook parking lot.
Yep.
Isn't that owned by the Boy Scouts?
Yes.
So, wouldn't he have to get permission from the Boy Scouts?
Let us, let, I think we, what we should do is proceed with our attorney to get this right-of-use, I don't know what you want to call it, permission contract or whatever, so that we can get it to Mr. Barden as soon as possible. I don't think we should really delay on this.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
And if we, maybe the attorney's going to say we can't do it, I don't know.
He just wants to drive down the road.
Yeah, I, I think you could work it out, that it'd be a temporary thing for this time, right now, this year. I think you'd find that to be the case.
Okay. So, Ken, you want to vote or just a consensus, is the consensus here not for you to go on to contact the attorney? Is everyone okay with that?
And just a further point, just because you say, I'm not going to hold you liable if I get injured on your property.
Right.
Doesn't make it true.
No.
Okay. So, that's, the important issue, the liability.
And that's our attorney, if he gives us something in writing, then he would be required to sign.
Right, right. And now we have a report from Mr. Boyle.
Oh, really?
With regard to the Old Windsor Road Bridge in honor of Specialist Mitchell Daley.
Well, I don't have any notes, but. I'm not sure where to start. Let me start with August 20th, 2018, at this board meeting. I proposed for this board to vote to authorize the legislature and Paul Mark to move forward legislation that would allow us to rename and sign, put up signage on the bridge on Old Windsor Road in honor of Specialist Mitchell K. Dowling. The board voted unanimously. I crossed all my Ts, dotted my Is and so forth and so on, so did Ken. We made a certified copy of that vote. We forwarded it to the legislature. Everything went fine. Don't forget, this was August. Now, I also had started this movement in July with Paul Mark informally. Can you get it going? You also save time. And he did. The legislative, necessary legislation, I don't, I have the number, Ken has the number, is moving along nicely in the House of Representatives through a couple of readings before various committees and so forth and so on, until some council, to one of the committees, decided that this board's vote, certified vote, asking for this to be done before the legislature was not enough. He wanted an expression of approval from the whole town, i.e. a town meeting.
Okay.
And make it short, that's where we are right now. Ken and I met with Paul Mark Tuesday, Election Day?
Yeah.
And he says, "If that's what the guy says, the council, there's no way around it. There's nothing he can do." I mean, he tried, he tried to reason with the guy, you know, "Isn't the letter from the Select Board certified by the town clerk enough?" No.
Okay.
So, Ken and I, also, the problem is of immediacy because if this doesn't get done in December, the legislature goes into another legislative year, a whole bunch of new people are elected and new people are hired. Anyway, the whole process would have to start over again. And who knows how long that would take again. So, looking at our datebooks and availability, Ken thought December 3rd, Monday, we might, if the board agrees to vote for a special town meeting on that date, would be the best date to do it.
Should we just have a town meeting here? I don't expect a lot of people to show up.
I was going to bring that up, add to the discussion.
Save money too.
Yep, we can have it.
And maybe we could have a Select Board meeting if we had something to, you know, combine the, right after that.
As long as, as long as we follow the rules.
Yep.
I don't care where we have it.
Yep.
But, you know, we have to accommodate enough people in the event that there's a lot of people who take interest in this. And if we have it in this room and we don't have enough room to sit people, we could be in a bind.
Go down to the crane room. Well, anyway, I just.
That's, I think you're, go ahead, John.
I just want to face, and to make sure we got this right and please the good council for the Committee on Transportation in the House. Ken has the exact language we need through Paul Mark, Ken might be incorrect on that.
Yes.
To put on the warrant. So, we don't. To put on the warrant, so we don't make a mistake. And also, I noticed with the prospective warrant today, you added another article.
Yes.
It's a housekeeping measure?
It is. Second article. It has to do with the extra Chapter 90 money we received. So, we might as well accept it so we can spend it.
Okay. Well, hopefully, the board would agree to go ahead with this. If not, that's it. But I also agree with Ed. We should have it right in this room or in the crane room.
I agree we should obviously have the meeting, but I don't think we should have it here. But I think we should have it where we can have a lot of people if they show up.
Well, what about the senior center? Is there a possibility? That has more room. I was just trying to keep the cost down.
Oh, I know, I know. But with town meeting rules, there has to be something that says you have to have it in a place to be able to accommodate those who are going to attend.
And we don't pay the school district for the use of their facilities.
We don't?
No.
Oh.
So, it's the same.
So, it's going to be the same people.
You need someone to get the checkers and all that.
Checkers and all that other.
Get them to checkers and stuff, you know.
Wow.
All we do is request the location. So.
That's fine, would be it.
Yeah, I agree.
If it's necessary. But anyway, if you're going to make your motion, Bob, this is important because they're looking, all eyes are on this by the legislature, that a special town meeting would be called to grant permission for the town to request the necessary legislation to allow a bridge memorialization for Specialist Mitchell K. Dowling on the Old Windsor Road Bridge. And we have the number somewhere on the bridge and we can insert that later. I have no problem with Nessus. That's where you have special?
Nessus.
Josh, why don't you make the motion?
Okay, so.
I'll second that.
Brittany, do you have that?
I got it on tape.
Okay, okay, good. These guys, it's hard to believe this happened.
Why would they need that, why would they need that motion in a certain way? Why can't we just say we're going to have a town meeting with regard to the bridge on Old Windsor Road? I don't know. Because we have another article on there, too. It's just not that.
Yeah, you should also adopt the warrant as presented.
Yeah.
Because when I leave this meeting tonight.
Yes, well, we'll do that and the location.
Okay.
So.
I'm just trying to cover all bases, that's all.
First things first, your motion was made. You seconded it. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, now, could we have a motion to accept the special town meeting warrant for December 3rd, right?
Yeah, I can get it out. If you read the, I put the 3rd at the 10th, so you have some choice.
The 10th is a regular meeting, so let's have it the 3rd.
Yeah.
Let's have it the 3rd. So, a motion to have a special town meeting on December 3rd at Nessus Regional Middle School and the time.
Okay, I make the motion. We have a special town meeting on December 3rd, 2018, at 7:00 PM at Nessus Middle High School.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there further discussion?
One other thing. Ken and I have communicated from Paul Mark indicating that if we, it's one of the suggested dates was the 3rd of December. If we could do it on that day, then Ken could immediately get the, granted that it's in the affirmation, get that information to Paul Mark. He would do his level best to get this completed in December before the beginning of the new legislative year.
I need to make an amendment to my, we need to accept the warrant as presented here also.
As well as have the meeting there.
I'll second that amended.
Seconded, amended.
Yeah, something like that.
Okay. Brittany, so we are voting on having the meeting at Nessus on Monday, December 3rd, 2018, 7:00 PM. At the same time, we are accepting the warrant as presented. Correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And that was seconded, made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Any further discussion?
Just one other point, because we always have a fallback place to go. It's typically if Nessus isn't available, we would go to Wacona. But if you think that's too big, we might be able to get it into the senior center. So, it's your choice. We don't, I didn't, I put this together so quickly, I didn't have a chance to have Judy check on the availability of Nessus, so we just want to make sure. If it's not available, we have an alternate location.
Well, if she's going to check on this, like tomorrow, if it isn't available, then we can bring it up at our next meeting and still have time, or no?
No, we won't.
We won't.
This will be posted on Thursday.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Okay. But you need to have a motion to have a fallback?
Yeah, or at least a consensus of where we go.
Let's just, let's just vote on what we already made a motion on, and then we'll get to that backup plan. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Now, as for a backup, why don't we use both? In the event that Nessus isn't available, we could use Wacona or the senior center.
Use a consensus on that.
Okay, is that okay with you? Do you just want a consensus?
That's fine.
Yeah.
You good? Okay, you got it. We covered everything on this? This seems a little more involved than most town meetings we've had.
So, are we going to have to sign this? Is stuff we're going to sign this before?
Yes, before we can post it.
Before Thursday?
The latest date it can be posted, I think, is coming Monday in the morning, in order to get the two weeks in.
So, will it be available tomorrow night for signing? I mean, I'll be in the building tomorrow night at the planning board. Will I get signed?
I'm not sure, because Debbie, you know, it'll be given to both Debbie and Judy with instructions tomorrow, then Debbie will produce the final. It's not going to change from what you said here, except take the draft off it.
Well, just be aware, Judy, just send out an email and tell us it's ready and come in and sign it. Okay. Okay. Okay, the GPI contract for Husatonix Street, Ken?
Okay, this is in the nature of, I think, the last piece of unfinished business with Husatonix Street. Our engineers worked through their contract and they are requesting a final payment of just over $5,000 for their services. And you can see, I asked our engineers, I'm going to put it in plain English, actually what they did. There's three points here on the memorandum. There's a post-construction meeting on March 19th. There was work trying to correct the icing that formed near the base of the wall, the retaining wall there. And then there were, we had them look into issues with flooding that occurred at the LP Adams property and further up the street. So, they have asked to be paid and they put on the standard contract form, it amounts to 38 extra hours.
Now, there's a credit in here? Because it says they, this is what I was kind of confused with, is we overbilled by 2968, 28?
Yeah, they submitted a bill for which there wasn't funding. That's basically what it's saying. And that's when we caught the overage.
Okay.
We submitted a bill. We couldn't pay it because the contract was fully utilized. No more money in the contract to pay them. So, then they went back and looked at it. Nonetheless, they continued doing the work and it needed to be done to close the project out. And it added up to $5,000. So, they went over the project by $2,900, project amount, project budget. And when they got done with all those items, they were over the project budget by $5,300. In good faith, they continued to work on this because they wanted to close the project out.
So, it isn't a credit?
It's not a credit. That's just where they got, you know, where it came to our attention and their attention that they had worked beyond the limits of the contract.
Okay.
Now, I would say if you choose to approve of this, what we would like to do, like, so the highway system had to take up Chapter 90 out of our engineering budget. So, any approval I would recommend be subject to an allocation of Chapter 90 funds, which has to be approved by the state. The state, as you might recall, funded a lot of this project, a lot of the costs of this project. There's going to be a Chapter 90.
So, we're going to vote on the 5340, 57 amount to close out the contract?
Close out the contract.
Okay. We have a motion, sure.
I make a motion that we paid $5,340.57 out of Chapter 90 funds to close out the highway, close out the engineering costs for Husatonix Street.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Thank you.
Yep. Wacona School Building Project and School Committee Report. School Committee is, right now, is unremarkable, just beginning to work on budget. And that won't be in earnest until December, when things, more things get cooking on that and we have some numbers. The Wacona School Building Committee, well, the, as most people may have read in the paper, the project was approved by MSBA Board of Directors for the preferred schematic design for Wacona Regional High School. And at this point in time, what's going to happen is now the actual design and costs are going to be calculated. And as I had mentioned last meeting, that number should be known in January and voted on by school committee in the, yeah, by the school committee at that point in time. Are there any questions? Because if you really, I have a meeting this Thursday at 4:30 at Wacona for the school, the school building committee. I'll have more information after that meeting as for what's going on. And that's, yeah, 4:30 at Wacona. And then after that, a school committee at Wacona as well at 7:00 PM.
I just have a question overall.
Yeah.
The other schools that are in the district, what are the shape for them? Is there some kind of report of what physical shape they're in or what they're going to be needing for the future?
Capital projects?
Capital projects per se.
There's no capital projects slated for any of the schools that have been talked about that I know of and that has been even discussed.
Has anybody even looked into it as far as?
I'm sure they keep up the, the school's been keeping up as for things that may need to be done. But as for it being outwardly known, I don't, I haven't seen that.
Okay.
I haven't seen that at all. I can inquire.
Yeah.
To see if there's some type of, like, a five-year plan. Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, five, 10, whatever.
Yes, the concern is that there's extra, more money, a lot more money might be needed somewhere. That would be an additional problem.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Ken, was there, I know it was two blanks on the ballot. Was there two additional or any additional people elected to the school committee on write-in votes?
I'll find that out on Thursday. But yes, I believe so.
Yeah.
I believe so. There was a kind of a write-in campaign. I know one of them was Rob DeFazio.
Yep.
And another one.
Mike Kingly.
I don't know. I don't remember. I know I had their names, but I can't remember. The only one I can remember was Rob. And I don't remember, there was also one from Covington.
Yeah.
I want to say Emerson, Todd Emerson. I can't remember the second one, the second one from Dalton, because there were two seats in Dalton.
Mm-hmm.
But four seats overall that got elected in Dalton. Two were on the ballot already, and then there had to be two more write-ins.
Did people get off the committee or they just?
Yeah, they just, they just decided not to.
If I get a meeting Thursday night, huh?
Yes, I'll find out then, for sure. That other person, I don't know. Yeah. Okay. Any other questions before we move on? Okay, Ken, the next couple of years, and this is the schedule of indebtedness.
Right, so Bishop would ask, take a look at our schedule of indebtedness. And if we consider this a work in progress, you get a chance to put it up on the screen, as I was asked to do. You can take a look. I tried to summarize this as best I could, because it gets complicated looking at these debt schedules. We have outstanding debt of $1.3 million, just under $1.4 million that we're paying on. We have authorized, but not yet incurred, debt of about $2.7 million. And I think that includes the $1.03 million authorized to demolish Old Dalton High School. So, 50% of that is the bond to be issued to demolish the old school. A total of $4 million of debt that the town is carrying. But so, we've paid, we're paying in this fiscal year, $369,377. That's the principal and interest payments on our debt. And you can see how it's divided up. The capital improvement program, those are the smaller items typically like waste cruisers and highway equipment and other smaller capital projects. And that composes the largest amount of our debt service, $153,000. Sewers and drains project, remember we just at Flansburgh Avenue, we did some laterals on Husatonix Street, that kind of thing. That amounts to $93,000 this year. And then the next two are the bonds we issued a little over 10 years ago for improvements to the town hall. But remember, we did some significant improvements to the library, the communication center, and we included some public works equipment as well. And the general renovations to town hall, and that's the $83,000 here. So, that's what comprises our debt payments on the outstanding debt of $1.3 million. And then again, includes interest. Now, you'll see that on the capital improvement program, we're paying, it's under the levy limit, meaning being accomplished within the levy. The sewer user fee pays for the sewers and drains projects. And then the other two were debt-excluded projects. That means they're added to the levy above and beyond what our levy limit is. You can't consider what our debt is, though, without, so it's called wraparound debt, and that's the debt of the school district. I didn't have a chance to find out what the outstanding principal balance were on all these projects. But from the budget submitted by the school district this current fiscal year, I was able to summarize what the school district has in debt. So, there's $156,000 that we're paying in school district debt. And you can see most of that is excluded debt added to the levy. That's the Crainville air handler, Wacona sidewalks, the security program, district security, the Crainville roof, Wacona renovation, and the Wacona feasibility study. It's on the books, but there's no payment yet under that. So, you can look at all those items there and when their final payment date is. There are two very small projects that we're paying for, Kipford Windows and Beckett Washington School. And you can see what those numbers are, approximately $4,000 we're paying underneath the levy limit. So, we have total debt payments this year is just over half a million dollars, $526,147. And I thought you might be interested in seeing what the tax rate impact of that debt is. So, it adds 88 cents to our tax rate. I think our tax rate was 1991 in this fiscal year. So, 88 cents of that is to pay debt. And the average single-family tax bill of $4,000, $181 of that amount is to pay our debt.
Do we have a list of when these things are going to get paid off or dates or?
We do. It gets complicated for us because we've got, especially this little issue. Typically, we do it in five-year increments. You might be surprised to know that the senior center's already paid off.
That's good.
It's off. So, it's kind of rolling, and I can get that, but it's a. That's off, so, it's, it's kinda rolling, and I can get that, it's a more complicated schedule. And, and that would be a good thing for me to, to add to this, when these debts, typical debts will be paid off. Capital improvement program, there's a lot of projects, like the library, Communication Center, the Town Hall, those were 20-year bonds, and they've probably been paid off about 2028.
Thank you.
Further questions?
And I'll do more on this as we move to the budget season.
Right, thank you.
Ken, the landfill's gone, right?
That's gone, yes, that was 20 years, I think it paid off in 2016. Just one correction before we can end this, next of $156,000 in school district debt payments, does that exclude it? That's not true, I just, I copied that, neither my mistake. So, as you can see, it's divided up.
What was that again, Ken?
The what?
Says, next of $156,000.
Yeah.
Total debt payment for the school district, it says debt excluded, added to the levy, that's incorrect.
Oh, okay.
It's divided between those two categories, and I didn't sub, I didn't subtotal them.
Okay. Okay, how about your updates?
Okay, just a few brief updates, and the LED light project is moving forward, auto-electric cells have been shipped, we have those now, the check is being put, we have a 50, a 150 closing gate with Eversource, and so we put that payment in process, $160,000 that we owe to Eversource for acquiring the streetlights, and we expect the lights themselves to come from the supplier pretty soon. So we're gonna have in the next couple of weeks, towards the end of November, a pre-construction conference, which I'm, the principal player really will be John Ruffey, because he'll have to supervise that work while it's being done, and Becky Slick will be helping in We've got a couple of other projects that have been long in process, they're gonna start probably last week in November, one is the acoustical panels, that we planned for the great room in the senior center, those panels were shipped, and I think they're at the senior center today, and the contractor's gonna come and install those probably the last week in November. And Town Hall carpeting, we've had that on the agenda for a while, there's a state contract out there that we've taken advantage of, Pet, Pet did a very nice job in getting that all together, and we expect that, I just completed the contract today, but again, we think contractor's gonna come on site at the end of November, and all the rooms in the Town Hall have great carpets. First time in 40 years.
These rooms have been.
Yeah, for, for real.
The exercise equipment's gonna be installed for the senior center?
That's right.
The outside?
That's, that's gotta be done, I think, by the end of the month as well.
Yes.
The outside exercise equipment, yeah, that's, that's gonna be installed, too. And just to remind everyone, that when we next meet on the 26th of November, principal agenda item will be to have a tax classification here, again, at that time, the tax rate will be set, the idea of what it's actually gonna be. I am told by our town accountant today, who she was reasonably based on increased values of property in Dalton, that the rate actually will go down a little bit. That doesn't mean people's tax bills are gonna go down, but the rate will go down.
Okay, thank you.
That's my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Oh, the, the garage on the West Mountain Park?
I have yet to follow up on that.
The deadline, I believe, is the end of the month.
Yes.
Take the oil truck, tank out and everything?
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna, I'll have to ask for an extension, I'm sure.
Yeah, I, I think it'd be a problem, wow.
Now, they, when we met with DEB, they said if you need an extension, just ask, so I'm not sure we have to ask for an extension.
Okay. All right, items for future agendas. The last two items, seeing that we had them on to, on this agenda, will now be taken off, that metering in the schedule of indebtedness. Does anyone have any additions to what we have?
Yeah, I have some, I would like to add, I'd like to have a later date discuss recognition of volunteers throughout the town, and what we can do to recognize them.
Cool.
Including, you know, the fire department, ambulance, beautification, the different boards, and stuff like that, that what we can do to recognize them.
Okay, so recognition of volunteers?
Yes.
Okay.
What are the thing two?
You want it for, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead.
You want it for next meeting?
No.
Okay.
We can just put it on there, I'm looking, maybe, maybe we can do it in December sometime, or.
Okay.
Maybe put my head to go, wraparound, some sort.
Okay. Okay.
Mark just sparked something, I mean, when the Kitchard Awards come out, we should present certificates, because Paul Mark does, and a bunch of other people give certificates, and nobody was there from the town to give the.
That was right up my, what I was thinking, cloud.
And then, you know, you got the two use, and then the Volunteer of the Year award for the actual people.
Do you have certificates for the Kitchard?
I think you could combine those, combine that with Ed, me and Bob today, together, because that was the right direction I was thinking, is we could present something, I'm sure that CRA would be willing to share a little bit of the spotlight if we asked, for Dalton.
Okay, do you want me to put that all in one?
Yeah.
Okay.
You fine with that, Bob?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
That's actually the action that I had in mind, too.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Or do you guys have some more?
Yeah, it's fine, yeah. I'm good.
All right. Okay, I'm good, too. I'll get that done. Okay, closing remarks on the select board, do we have any? I wanna thank you guys for putting up with me having the additional meetings these past couple of months, I just feel that we have too much stuff going on, that we shouldn't only have just one meeting in the, in the month, and I know it may be a bit of a draw at times, but thank you for putting up with me on that one. Anybody else?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yes.
Yes.
Comes early this year, 22nd, I think.
Yes, it is. Happy Thanksgiving.
More time to Christmas shopping.
Yeah.
Christmas?
Holiday shopping, or whatever is the correct.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not saying.
It's Christmas already, you know?
Can I just?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to recognize and thank all the veterans from the town for all their service they did for all the years. I mean, we wouldn't be here without them, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, announcements. Dalton Police Department is reminding the citizens of Dalton of the winter parking ban, which goes into effect on November 15th, and will be in effect until April 15th, 2019. I hold office hours by appointment, for further information, please call 413-684-6111, extension 11, or you may call my home number at 413-684-2526. State Representative Paul Mark holds office hours at Dalton Town Hall, 462 Main Street and Callahan Room, on Tuesdays from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, with the exception of the third Tuesday of each month. On the third Tuesday, office hours are 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Town Hall, and from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM at the Dalton Senior Center. You can reach his office at his district number, which is 413-464-5635. I declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body.
I move we go into executive session to conduct a strategy in preparations for negotiations with union and non-union personnel and litigation that may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the public body, and not return to the open session.
I'll second that.
Okay, rural call vote, Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Hollup?
Yes.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Straub?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
We are adjourned for three minutes.
Three minutes.
Or less.